All right, um, any changes to be made? Yes, no?
No.
I saw.
All right, motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of six two twenty five.
Second?
That's okay.
In favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining because I was not here. So I'm here now.
Can we hold that one at like five minutes after the meeting? We'll add to that.
What one?
The non pub.
No, this is from six two. No, no, that, no, the other one won't be until, so, uh, these are six two non pub minutes. I make, I'm making a motion that we seal for five years.
I'll start.
One second.
Bonnie. In that's to affect adversely the reputation and attraction of other than a member of the board. Uh, Roxanne, yes?
Tim, yes.
Bonnie, yes.
Tracy, yes?
Thank you.
All right, next thing we have is the Bond Road. Do we get any more information on that?
Uh, I think, uh, Robin sent an email and she is, uh, looking into what that entails.
Okay. All right, please part time pay.
So Scott had presented.
The information to us?
Yep, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, or four.
Yep.
And for us to review. And I was okay with what he was proposing.
Anybody else got any comments?
No, everything looked good to me.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Do you, do you have the numbers thought in front of you? Thank you.
Uh, so my proposal was, uh, with a full time certification, zero to ten years, twenty eight, uh, ten to fifteen years, twenty nine, fifteen plus years, thirty. And then with a part time certification, again, these are all part time positions, but with just a part time certification, part time work, uh, just a range of eighteen to twenty five depending.
Okay.
Yeah, well, he can give, um, I'll make a motion that we accept the, the new pay scale for the police officers.
Paul's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, personal policy. Need to start talking about that.
I read through it. Um, I know we, we didn't get all the way through it, or I don't know if maybe, did you get all the way through it, Tim, for your recommendations?
I did.
Okay. Um, I do wanna go back through one section before we were to need to vote on that.
All right, which one would you like to go through?
Um, the, um, longevity. I just wanna see if the wording is around that.
All right, so we're on table lot till our next meeting?
Yeah.
Have a conversation about that?
I'm good with that.
All right. Everybody else good? Let's place my agenda again.
Thank you.
Look, ready? All right. Communication policy. You guys have a chance to take a look at that?
Yeah.
All right.
I did.
Trying to remember what it said.
I don't have it here in front of me, do you have it?
Yeah.
I do.
Oh, right here, please.
Yep.
So this is not, this is digital communication?
That's right, so this is digital communication for the website and social media. Pretty much kinda just outlines what we'd be looking to have people do. Um, I believe what's called that, the biggest thing is we have four people doing, on the website, which would be a designated person from the board, selectman secretary, the administrative clerk, and the director of emergency management.
Is, are we limited on the number of people we can have access to the website?
Yes.
It's, is, it has to be like even numbers?
Yes, so it's either four or eight.
Oh, you can't have six?
Nope.
Well, that's just weird.
I agree with you, that's one thing I looked into.
Okay. No, I just, it's odd, I just, okay, I didn't know that.
What's that?
Who was she looking at?
Who else were you looking at?
No, who was I also?
Yeah.
I was just curious, I mean, because right now we only have one selectman and it would be good.
Well, I would think the selectman can use the same exact password.
Oh, okay, no, I'm, I just was, okay, I'm fine with that.
I mean, that's how I see it, it would be our email.
Okay, no, then I'm good with it.
And our password.
Then I'm good with it, okay.
So.
It's just weird that it's, that is.
I, I agree.
That is not police enforcement.
It was EMS.
Oh, EMS, that's one.
Or.
Or emergency management director.
Emergency management, sorry, not to be confused with.
Would be the fire chief. So that way, what's called, if there are issues that come up, you can post on the news section. And what I'll do is what's called, be in touch with our website people on tomorrow and Wednesday to get all that stuff for everybody. And I'll email the passwords and, or temporary passwords and all that stuff for you guys to then log into. All right. Um, was there any more questions on the digital communication?
Kim, are you able to post everything now?
On them.
We had discussed that, uh.
So her and I just need to work, she has passwords and all that stuff, her and I just need to work on,
I haven't signed one since.
But she has all the information.
So is this policy just for our website?
For, yep, our, well, our website and social media.
Which is Facebook and.
YouTube and.
Social media, I looked in Kim's password books, there's no passwords for any Instagram.
It's the same as the Facebook.
Oh, that's not written in there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, question, so, uh, conservation commission would go to?
Kim?
Kim, for any changes, not to our select person representative?
Well, I mean, you can tag me on your email if you want.
Yeah, but I mean.
But yeah, Kim would have direct access to it, right?
Where, where you think that, how that should be best adjusted? If you're Kim with your Tracy, cause she'd been at, Tracy would've been at the meetings.
Either way.
I think we're the shares, couldn't email, what's called.
Just curious, it's not ideal, and we have, actually have a town Facebook.
We do. We have it down Facebook, down Instagram, and down YouTube.
I was just born yesterday, I'm sorry.
You were, Kim?
I was.
I'm sorry, I thought you were asking that as a question, but.
That was a question.
Okay, yes, okay.
No, it was a question.
Okay, yeah, no, we have.
Nobody did not have access to Facebook. It's just Tom, cause there's like five Middleton Facebooks out there, isn't there?
So I believe ours, our official one is just town Middleton.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll figure it out.
Amazing.
Absolutely.
I thought it was Middleton underscore.
Is that, okay.
There you go, already I'm down.
I'm pretty sure that's what it is. For social media, I would just go back to what I had voted on in July, that, um, we keep it as the posting only.
Yep.
I know you do a lot of, um, AI, and I looked back through a lot of stuff, we know that as a board, we've had some issues and asked things to be changed immediately. Um, in one of the videos, I'm guessing AI did that, I have no idea about AI, but the town of Middleton is spelled incorrectly.
I think if you look what's called, that hasn't happened probably about three or four months since using AI.
I just.
So I saw you.
I know ha, I don't know anything about hashtags, I know that, um, you had shared our page to news in New Hampshire, which had almost ten thousand members, which changes your likes and video watches. I, our target, our audience is Middleton, so I just wanna make sure that that act, information that we're giving out is accurate to Middleton residents when it, it would be gone out to the state of New Hampshire.
Right.
Which increases your likes and stuff.
Yeah. And there's a lot of people who live in New, live in Middleton, who aren't on our media area, who go to, yeah, and saw the state of New Hampshire stuff.
I'm just saying that it's not just Middleton pages that your information is coming from.
The coming, uh.
Going to, you mean?
No, like.
Oh, you mean for the, for the, uh, for the, uh.
Right, so we're, yes, but what's called, we're seeing a lot more people throughout the state like our information and watch our information.
All right, I still stand, I just feel that we shouldn't have hashtags, I think it should just be like, I don't know, I'm very black and white, selectman meeting, here's the posting, that's it. I think if you get very weedy, I read the Facebook, town, whatever, the discussion page tonight about people's feelings, and I don't want, as a board member, that to come across as, yeah. Someone wrote that, I think it was Bonnie. I just don't want my, someone to think that I, as a selectman, I'm swaying people to any which way when it comes to voting for things.
I.
Absolutely not, I'm not trying to sway anyone, I'm.
No, I don't.
The information needs to be out there.
Where, like, I don't remember trying to sway anybody, wasn't any stuff on there.
How do you feel about just having selectmen's meeting, just having budget meeting, whatever's being posted?
I'm fine with that. But, yeah. My only information that gets on there is the meetings and whatever information that, like, if there's posts about a, the mill foil that gets out, stuff like that.
No, I'm talking about strictly.
I was gonna say.
The information about it, not the extra stuff.
Okay.
That's just my two cents.
I'm, I'm just literally trying to figure out what we're talking about.
Are people giving opinions on this page, is that what you're saying?
They shouldn't be.
They should not be, but they are.
During the school deliberative session, it kinda took that tone. A lot of people were asking me if the selectmen were one way or another with the school, and I was like, no, we are, we have nothing to do with the school.
And so they were seeing that as, as a sway or a?
Oh, yeah, if that happens, brings my attention, because I must've missed it.
Think we did.
No, and if they, I'm sorry, if they were asking, they're asking you if you have an opinion, so they would not be swayed by what was on the website. They would ask you for your opinion.
I don't want it in black and white for something that we should be as a five board standing for, that's why I'm very simple, I think it should be just the heading and nothing else, that's, then there is no interpretation on feelings, it's literally tonight's meeting, uh, June ninth, and the date and the time, and that is it, that's how I feel regarding social media. The website could have a little bit more, I think the priority should be the website over social media.
So for example, what's called, yeah, I saw the information about discussion of part time, I saw the discussion about part time, police department, review of personal policy, communication policy, consideration of town ID, do you don't think that should be on there?
I don't. You're, you're literally repeating what is in the agenda, just post the agenda, I think that is sufficient.
Hmm, okay.
That's just me, I'm only one board member.
Like I said, what's called, it's been my experience, that usually people, like, will read this. They'll read the text, the feature is just kinda to get them, get their attention.
Anybody else in China?
I mean, if they're that interested, I think they would go to the website to see what the agenda is, or if you post it, they can pull up the agenda to see, or the link to the agenda to see what's being discussed, it, to me, is kind of, it is kind of just a repeating of information, but, yeah. I don't do social media, so I'm not, I like.
I understand, but I mean, that's just kinda what I've been trained on, so that's why, what's called, I'm trying to be able to sound the best of my experience. I mean, it doesn't really look like, like Middleton School District important dates. Where, when, what? Upcoming warrant being signed.
Are there national policies on communication, like when they have?
We're looking at it, right?
That's what we're, yeah. It's up to the board. If that's the consensus of the board, then that's fine.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Put that forward.
I guess.
With what?
Good with just posting what, like, you had stated, that this is, you know, the meeting, this and that, here's the minutes, if you wanna link them, or here's the agenda or linking it, I mean, to me, that's kind of a duplication of effort is to go out and, but, I mean, you're the one that's, was doing it, so, I mean, I don't have, I wouldn't have the time to do that, Tim, so, I mean, but I think it just keeps it.
More people go to our social, uh, go to our social media than our website, so.
But I mean, but if you want the source of the information, they should go to the web, to the website, that's, that's where, I mean, people should not rely on social media to get their facts.
I think some of what.
That's my opinion.
I think some of what Tracy means maybe, tell me if I'm wrong, is like, instead of putting, we are excited to do this, just put it there.
Okay.
Instead of the extra, because they can form their own opinion.
Sound good? Carol?
Just speaking from that quote unquote generation, um, um, they kind of, a lot, I, I'm not very good with it either, but they just, they really do pay attention to those silly hashtags.
Where does it go? I know, they link to things.
I don't know why, they, they don't read the whole thing, they look at like the topics, they don't look into it, and it's just a way to get, the hashtag makes it so that more people see it that are involved with that, like, the algorithm picks that up and says Middleton, New Hampshire, or select meeting, or budget committee, whatever, it'd be either you hashtag, and it will look through and say, hey, this person has an interest in this.
Where does it go, Tim?
Like you said, what's called, so the algorithm will look at the hashtag, and then people who have typed that before, who are interested in that topic, it'll put it at the top of their feed.
I think the biggest issue that I see on social media isn't from our own social media, it's when it gets shared to the multiple other, so, like, so it'll make it to the Middleton, the news.
News and discussion.
That one usually stays like somewhat kosher, and then there's like a couple other sub ones that people would make, that it then starts going astray. So then they all look alike, everybody knows what, doesn't know which one it is, so they start just, it'll just go astray, but no one's monitoring, adminning some of those, so those ones get a little crazy, but, um, the news and discussion one, I know usually will get shut down once it starts getting messy, which usually happens, but, um, I just know that, there's a lot of kids that that's what they pay attention to.
What, then?
But that's, that's not, it's not.
These hashtags, I have honestly no idea, I just, it seems like, for me, in my generation, seems very garbled, like, I don't have.
You should go to the website or go to the town hall, look at the, you know, typically, yes, but, uh, the kids of these generations, they just don't do that. So it depends on how important that is to that. I'm just saying, you weren't just automatically saying, get rid of this, like, I don't know if you wanted to discuss it outside of me.
I didn't know it even led to a algorithm, I couldn't have told you that much. I just, it looks, for lack of a better word, messy.
I don't, I do not disagree, I'm just saying, you might end up having like nobody notice it after, because the town, it's the, somehow the town's actual website page barely ever comes up a bit, but then like a million people that have now have shared it or commented, all of a sudden it's like flooded. I, I don't know.
So I think you're saying the hash, you're fine with the hashtag, it's like what, the, the point was, the point is, is to take out the feeling like we feel, or you should get out and vote, or, you know, the stuff telling that. No, but that's, I think that's what we're, I think the consensus is to eliminate that, to just say, this is, voting is on this day, these are the times.
Good.
I just, just to clarify, the purpose of a hashtag actually is, if you're on a posting and you click on it, it will show other postings with that same exact hashtag, so, for instance.
Mean the pound sign?
Yes. The take tag to a ward. Um, yes, so if, if, you know, he puts on the hashtag Middleton, New Hampshire, and you click on that, it's not only gonna show his post, but it will show other posts that have tagged Middleton, New Hampshire as a hashtag. So, a big thing now, when people get married, they come up with this quirky little phrase and it's hashtag, I don't know, um, I can't really read these really quick, um, you know, he got the girl, so, in ninety, uh, two thousand twenty five, so, if they put that, like, people come to your wedding and they take pictures and they hashtag that, you click on that, everybody's pictures that have a hashtag will show up. So, it's a way to get it out there in a different way. I guess it is. That.
We're making progress, you guys are very quiet.
I don't know what's left to discuss.
Do you have to adopt that, do you have to take a vote? I don't know.
We're not voting on it tonight.
We can vote on it.
Yeah, just taking notes and relooking. What about AI? How does everybody feel about AI?
I don't like AI.
I've been using it, so.
You did use it for our photo, though? Cause I was shocked, I was like, where did that photo come from?
Actually, no, that wasn't AI, I created that.
You did?
I did, yes.
Wow. I would like to be skinnier.
What did you say?
I wanna be skinnier. Like Bonnie.
Right.
I have bangs.
So we don't use AI, then?
Nope, we haven't been using AI.
All right.
Yep.
Then I would write that maybe in the policy.
Yes.
It's always a human being doing it.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm fine with that.
And this, uh, this policy is for everyone?
Yeah.
It's for the town, the town of Middleton.
Not employees and, and then volunteers as well?
If you're, well, it would be basically whoever's posting on the town's behalf to the social.
So it would be like Kim or, you know.
Yeah, she's a town employee.
Right.
Yep, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Correct.
All right. And we'll work on those and we'll come back with. All right, town IDs. Um, Scott had created some town IDs for us. Or at least what's called a, um, proof for us to look at, that we left at the, the office. Um, so do anybody have any ideas on that, or anything that they would like to include, or move forward with it?
I like that.
I like the, yeah, I like the idea, I love about the town.
Yeah, he wants to keep that.
Why do you like the idea?
I like the idea of, um, some, a town employee having an ID that they can present, you know, show that they.
Town employees also can get discounts at different places if they have.
Oh, that's why you like the idea.
Could be washing.
Save a buck.
I get a discount off a car.
And that was starting from that viewpoint.
No, but Kate too, like, um, where I do payroll, I don't know all the fire, I don't know their faces, I have no clue who they are.
Just.
So if they come in and ask something about their paycheck or their hours or something, that's another, that's just another aspect.
Do you have lips, just seems like, like, is that what they're now?
Yeah, I think it is. I think it's a great idea.
We have an ID maker, so we, we have it, it's not like we're purchasing it to.
Do you know what's fine?
You know.
But, but the other reason behind it too is like Carl, Carl's to go to somebody's house.
Well, Carl.
There's some issue, nobody knows who he is.
Carl needs armor.
So at least now, I can find someone.
No, I think it's a great idea.
Yes, well, I wanna make, I'll make a motion that we move forward.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Scott, can you start me on, uh, IDs? All right. All right, CSA Environmental Consultants. The Old Town Hall parking lot.
Yeah, so I think this has been, you hadn't had it originally, Tracy, and we've gotten some emails. Huh?
It's coming up again?
Yeah, we had it.
I've reached out to them, never heard of them.
Well, yeah, no, he's, he has sent on May twelfth, twenty twenty five, he sent back and said attaches the invoice, so, and I know, Dan, we've talked about this, or you've talked about it in general, is that the feeling is, is S U R may have paid for this, or they probably did pay for this?
Some of it, yep.
Some of it, okay.
Usually if you have a, a design on a, you know, on a program, the, the company that's doing the, the job has to pay the engineering firm for the information, so.
Did we ask CAS if they received any money from S U R on this? I'm just curious, in, I don't think it was worded like that, okay.
And then the, and then, you know, some of the other expenses, I would say, myself, would fall under the contract as a whole, not individual things, like, if you have a bid opening, usually, if you're an engineering firm, you don't charge an hour for a bid opening.
Okay.
Um, if, if you have a site walkthrough that's optional, you know, that's part of your contract as, as putting the job together, um,
Okay.
That's my opinion.
All right, no, that's fine, I mean, so that's good to go back.
And it's, and all these, all these, um, bills that he sent in, or all these expenses or whatever, were from that, you know, back when they first did the job, and when I say they, I'm talking CSA, when they first engineered the job, um, knowing full well, you put out the bid, you know, you're gonna have to, these are the steps that you take, you know, you're gonna have a bid opening, you're gonna have a walkthrough, you're gonna have all this, it's, it seems.
Yeah, well.
Kind of petty to be sending bills up.
Well, I, yeah, I don't, I don't quite understand, with three years, four years now down the road in getting this, but, um, three of them are from twenty twenty one, and the, the other one is from last year, of them giving the CAD file to S U R.
Right, yeah, when, when we awarded the job, yeah, and the CAD file, like I said, the CAD files are usually, um, the construction company pays, it, it, it shouldn't be a charge to us for someone else to get the information to do the job.
Right, so this, you would've thought that they, they would've charged S U R for this?
Yeah, usually the construction company gets charged for the CAD file.
Okay. So we can follow up on this, Tracy, and see what we can come up with, that's all, that's all that.
All right, uh, town website, what's our town website access, we pretty much discussed that already? All right. So now we have swearing in. Of Taylor Hutchins?
Yep.
All right. Taylor? Am I saying that right, am I saying that correct?
We wanna get a good picture, so you, Tim, Tim go up there, I don't wanna be in the picture.
Overall abandonment.
All right.
Hey, guys?
Wow, they really don't want to. All right. I?
Aye.
Taylor Hutchins?
Taylor Hutchins.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Affirm that I will faithfully.
And affirm that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially just discharge.
And perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon, upon me.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For the Middleton Police Department.
For the Middleton Police Department.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And agree to the rules.
And agree to the rules.
And regulations.
And regulations.
Of this constitution.
Of this constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God. So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, Keith Hutchins?
May I speak?
Would you like to do the honors?
Can you drink a couple?
It's not a bonus.
You talk too much. My glasses, so I don't pour.
You good?
I'm good, I'm good.
Every angle.
Right. Hashtag new car.
Thank you, Dan.
Somewhere in there.
How are we doing? We're done there?
We're getting there.
Okay.
I think it doesn't wanna go down to the other hole.
It's coming off, catch your star.
Let's go really good.
Good. It's gotta be Dad's fault, right?
Yeah.
I'll do it, yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll pass.
Taylor. Thank you. Welcome. We'll afford to welcome you.
Congratulations.
Keith? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You didn't draw a block, that was good, but we can have some EMS.
All right. All right, so. We applied for a clean water, see revolving fund. Um, this is something that we approved to do, uh, a, the warrant signing meeting. And just letting you guys all know that we applied for.
Oh, okay. Yeah, um, Stratford Regional Planning is applying, is doing all that work on up for, for the town of Middleton. Yep.
All right, um, then we have the, all right, the.
Oh, yeah.
Sol, Solitude Applying Neopile Riverside Treatments to Pinkham Cove, that's happening on the nineteenth.
And that'll get put up on the website, right?
It's already on the website.
Perfect.
Sorry, make sure that's.
Yep. Um, just wanted to make sure that people who were watching understood that on the nineteenth on Sunrise Lake, we wanna be careful of swimming, no swimming for six hours or within two hundred feet of the treat areas. The treat area will be the Pinkham Cove area. All right, do not water or irrigate gardens, landscape plants, not to worry about golf courses. Um, restriction applies to all water intakes, two hundred feet from the treatment areas or fifty feet off the shoreline. Drinking water, there are no restrictions on drinking water or domestic water or home systems. All right, signs will be posted on the shoreline near the treat areas for questions, body irrigation restrictions, please contact Pete Baslar at Solitude Lakes. His phone number is five oh eight, eight six five, one thousand. And that's that. Um, we did receive one of the grants we applied for, unfortunately Kim and I were looking for the paperwork and we couldn't find it.
We don't know what it's for?
It's for the water shed, uh, sunrise lake water shed.
Okay.
We'll keep, we'll look at that information.
It's in the file.
I was gonna say, are you aware? I'm just, if it has to do with water, Kate and John would know about it, I would say.
What water shed grant come on the John block?
Yes.
So it's probably, yeah.
I believe so.
So I'd look in, look in John's.
But.
Is that the one that came in the mail?
Yes.
And you're looking for the paperwork?
We're, we're looking for the file, what's called the, our file, what's called, we give the other file to what's called the, that in the water shed box or.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Emergency management.
Eric Wheeler, I'm the emergency manager director and the fire chief. Uh, as far as emergency management goes, there's not a whole lot new to, um, yeah, this month, or last month, should I say, um, we had, uh, we did attend one meeting for the Ray Stracker Group, which is our, uh, public health planning, uh, group for the county, um, with the area fire chiefs. And I did attend a meeting for the Public Health Network, hosted a, a regional, uh, public health group. Uh, that, that's kind of everything else that we've talked about in the past, it's still a process, still working out in general at the school, that's kind of the big emergency project right now. But more to come, most likely in July, we'll have a better handle on that. So that's all I have for emergency management, if anybody has any questions. All right. Move on?
Fire.
All right. Um, we did have a relatively slow month in the month of May, uh, as far as volume of calls, we responded to seventeen calls for service, nine of which were EMS calls. Um, half the report we only had, one mutually aid loads from Farmington, Kansas Town, uh, for the local. Um, we did only have three EMS transports throughout the month, uh, most of our calls were, that consist of things of that nature that didn't require transport. Um, EMS billing, uh, again, with a slow month, we billed up four thousand four hundred and one dollars and sixty-four cents, uh, of which at this point, as of quarter of this afternoon, we collected, uh, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-two cents, which is pretty average, being early in the following month, it takes a couple of months to recruit. Um, engine one responded to Farmington, uh, for a building fire. Engine one responded to Wakefield for station coverage last week. Uh, tanker five, rescue one, along with the side of the mule, responded to a large brush fire in active domain. Um. All, all of our apparatus, uh, responded to sixty-four Silver Street for a brush fire that extended to a home. Uh, we thank our mutual aid partners from Farmington, Milton, Wakefield, Durham, both for the Centrosy, uh, Action EMS and the DMS for their assistance. Um, half the reports the homeowners were able to reoccupy the home. And we had many numbers from our department responding to that. Uh, Deputy Chief Manchester secured a donation of a TV, uh, from Walmart in Rochester, um, it's in my office, so we'll get it out here for, for use for different things, uh, Tim said he has a carport, uh, it'll also help with the train and things like that to be able to display.
I'll bring it up to you, sorry about that.
That's all right, no worries at all. Um, so, so that would be beneficial, especially if we look to, uh, our, our, our one class in the fall, need to display PowerPoints, um, for that, so. We'll have that for use here in town hall. It's, like I said, it's located in my office, Walmart designated that. Uh, members worked very hard, uh, over the, the last month, uh, month and weeks, I guess, uh, to paint and resize, uh, a couple of sides of the building. Um, we did discover some pretty significant rot in the bridge roadside wall of the building, that's all been repaired. Um, it's just, uh, from the way that the reconstruction was done initially. Um, so there's been a large section of the sill that's been replaced, as well as the framing for one of the windows was rotted out of the building. Um, so that's all been repaired though, so. Uh, remaining electrical works and overhead, overhead door work needs to be completed over the next couple of weeks. Um, supposed to just put in the gaskets around the doors after we re-trimmed everything. And then, uh, the, the lighting on the front of the building will be installed. So, uh, well, next, uh, myself and Engineer Traver will be traveling to US Fire Apparatus in Louisiana next week. Uh, we go down late night on the nineteenth, it sounds like we're flying up. Uh, then we'll inspect the truck, um, in the morning at the factory, and then we'll drive it back. So we'll have a couple of days trip back from Louisiana, firing it at those sixty-three miles an hour. It should be, should be, should be a trip. Um. But that's all right. Um, we expect to put the truck in service sometime in July. We need to have all the radios and equipment mounted in the truck once it gets back here, we're just swapping our equipment over from the, the current truck. And then we'll do some training on it.
And you're all set with that, it's, uh, it, you know, uh, being registered and everything, cause you were working on that?
Yes, uh, Thursday I'll be going to Concord to.
Okay.
Order the plates. You will notice it'll have a paper plate on it, cause apparently the new municipal fireplace they came over that are similar to the police ones are ten weeks behind.
Okay.
So we'll have a paper plate for a while, but it, it is kind of just moving.
No, I just wanted.
It's easier to travel with a paper plate, I think.
Some insurance on it.
And, uh, yeah, we'll put insurance on it. We have the, I received the title. I wanna say Friday, Thursday or Friday, I received the title for the truck in the mail, um. And, uh, so I'll be going to Concord Thursday to get registered. And then I'll contact Prime Next, they just need the registration once it's, once it's done, they'll get it insured before we put that. Um, we are welcoming, uh, a new EMS provider that's here in town, uh, T M L R, um, will be starting next week. She's an experienced EMT, uh, she's currently in paramedic school, she works for AMR Manchester, um, she lives right down Kings Highway. So it'll be a, be a nice addition to have on the department. That's, uh.
It is?
Yeah, so that's. All right, I just wanna, again, thank all of our members who've been doing a fantastic job in, in getting out there and covering our calls. Things are going very well. Uh, the only, the only thing, uh, the only thing I will mention is kind of a side effect of progress. Uh, we have, uh, changed our training schedule from weekly to bi-weekly. Um, again, it's a great problem to have, but the, the situation we have is we have a lot more members attending trainings and responding on calls, and it's eating up our, our fire department salary line very quickly. So in, in being conscious of that, we're, we're making some changes. So you may not, there's some Tuesday nights you won't see everybody at the firehouse, and that's, that's where we're at.
So, so with that, that kind of goes in conjunction with item twenty-six here, so if we wanna address that while you're right here, you're. This is, um, and I, we talked about it and we put it on here, so.
Okay.
Under the ambulance revolving account, because we're getting the firefighter medical assist with EMS calls, Jared had asked if they could potentially be paid out of that, cause they're going on medical calls. I didn't think there would be an issue with that, because it's EMS, but I wanted to bring it before the board and make sure everybody was on board and okay with that, so I'll just.
Yeah, I, I guess a little bit on it, um, so on medical calls often, we have patients that we need additional help removing from the residence, or extra hands, or extra driver for lead ambulance. Um, fortunately, we do have a large number of, of responders on calls now, um, and that adds into the payroll. There's really no realistic way with an un-called department to regulate how many people show up for a call. So, um, what we're looking to do, the, the warrant article when it was approved in two thousand eleven, uh, in the language, it says to, let me, let me make sure I get it correct here. Yeah, it says payment of personnel to operate the ambulance and provide the service. So I guess my, my question is where we, we are, uh, doing very well on our EMS revenue budget, uh, revolving account. If we could supplement the fire responders, um, from that line as well, just to help with our budgetary.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah?
Move it out?
That's kind of all I'm asking, I guess.
I just wanna say how great the fire station looks. You guys did an awesome job, it looks really good.
Yeah, everybody worked very hard, uh, we had a lot of help and they came over and did some things.
That's very thanks, it looks great.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You wanna know where you get the new fire station?
They filled a lot of those. Yeah.
All right, Dan?
All right, who's, who's to stand? Don't break the camera. Yeah, no. Please camera shy. All right. Stan Phillips, P H I L L I P S.
Yep, I got that, thank you.
President, road agent. And, uh, this is for, uh, May twelfth through June ninth, which is today. Uh, went down, cleaned the beach and prepped that for, uh, the town beach, for the chemical toilet to be delivered. Put a little bit of stone there, there was some roots coming up and stuff, just to make it safer. Um, we took out the flags, prepped those and put those up. Um. Took the lawnmower out and, uh, got that all ready and mowed the lawns, did all the trimming as needed. Um, we did pick up the new truck that had been sitting here, uh, most of the winter, had the body, uh, which is a flatbed. Had the body and, uh, plow gear put on that, so that is back and ready to be put in service, hopefully not till November, December. But, uh, we'll see on that. Um. Programmed a message board for the rec department for their event that they had at a craft fair. Um. A regular dirt roads is needed, and that is ongoing. Um. Got some pricing, are getting, in the process of getting pricing for the loader bucket. The loader bucket is, uh, we're ten years old and it's just normal wear and tear. Uh, it's just from loading sand and materials, acts like sandpaper, wears the bucket down, wears the sides down. So we're at the point where, uh, you rebuild it and you don't bend things and stuff like that, so we're in, in the process of doing that. Um. Worked on getting pricing for a flail mower, and that's for the roadside mowing. Uh, hopefully, what we can do is, I think we're pretty well set on trucks for right now. And, uh, that would probably be the main item to come out of the next block grant. So I think it's probably in the neighborhoods, they get a quote on that back in two thousand twenty, it was right around between sixty-eight, seventy-three thousand, that's put on the machine, the hydraulics of the machine run, run the, uh, flail mower, so. And what we'll end up doing is, the spots that we cut manually with chainsaws and chip, uh, we'll keep, keep on those spots and mow what we can mow, uh, with a flail mower. And then we'll have to just get caught, eventually we'll get caught up with all the, the bigger, larger stuff, and then just be able to maintain what we have, uh, with that flail mower. So we're not looking to, um, use the flail mower for taking down, you know, the stuff that's ten, twelve feet tall. Um. We're just looking to use it to maintain the stuff that we, that we have, uh, already cut. Did three driveway permits, uh, those were all on Pinkham, which is map eight lots, six four, six five, and six seven. Um. The, uh, fire department, uh, staff had chipped, uh, had, uh, cut down some brush around the building to do their repairs. And, uh, so we fired up the, uh, the chipper, went over and chipped that for them. And the, uh, chips that, the pile of chips out of there, we're gonna use, we discussed it, we're gonna use them around the propane tanks, uh, just to help, you know, so it's, uh, repurposing the, the chips for that. Uh, had a site issue on, on Nicola, uh, on a shop corner and, uh, down by the culvert and the guardrail. So we cut the brush down there and chipped that up. And let's see. Finally got to take the wings off of, uh, truck number twenty and twenty-four. Got those all washed and, uh, painted, and then I'm hanging out back. Uh, we took all the front plows, uh, paint was still pretty good on them, we washed those and, and got those put out back for the summer. Um, took the last, took the sander out of, uh, truck number twenty-two and washed that, put that up for the summer. Um. I did have one call out for a tree that was down in the roadway on Kings Highway, and that was Saturday, um, five thirty-one, that was, uh, that called out at night for that one, we went down and took care of that. Um. Got the pump readings for Kim again. Um. And we checked the flags in the, in the beach, clean the beach every week, uh, so that's something that we're, is ongoing. Uh. Let's see. Loaded the new schedule for the, for the school signs, those seem to be working, um, pretty well. We, we synced the time up on those as well. Um, went out and patched holes and, uh, broken shoulders, uh, on all the roads. Uh, took the, took the last sander out, which is the smaller truck, um, which is the one that they replaced. We're gonna reuse that sander in that new truck, wash that, put that up for the summer. Uh, we picked up the resident sand pile out there and brought that down, put that back down in our mixed pile in the, in the shed. Um. Did meet with the paving company, they're getting some pricing put together. Uh, we're gonna be looking to do, uh, Governor's Road, we'll be repairing the, um, there's a culvert. there's a culvert that had been replaced and it, and it had a little failure in the middle, so we'll be fixing that, scraping the shoulders and, uh, hopefully get some pricing back on that. And there was another spot that I had them price out for a shim on Silver Street, uh, because as part of the X, the main drags going in and out of town. That'll be probably the next road we'll be working on next year would be Silver Street. Just put the message on for the Sunrise Lake Watershed Advisory Committee and that, there, there's no one, well, I shouldn't say there's no one here behind you, but you're a part of it. Um, so they are having a meeting Saturday, uh, on six twenty-eighth from nine to noon. It's going to be a breakfast and a presentation, so I'm just kind of throwing that out there for them, we're going to put that on the sign for them. And that's what that's all about.
Continental focus.
So there's a little more information, so I guess if you go on and, and read about that. Uh, we did have a, we did have a quick rainfall, uh, event over the weekend where we had quite a bit of rain come in a short period of time. We do have a, a culvert that is, um, not completely failed, but it's not, the flow is restricted, it's down on Lake Shore Drive, I did have an email and I, I sent a, uh, an answer back uh, of a gentleman that lived on Elaine, so we did, I did respond to that. Uh, that is in motion, the engineering company does, they're, they've been hired, they're gathering all the data, they're going to come up with a solution and present that. And the work is actually supposed to be happening in the fall, October, November timeline. So just to put that out there, um, because I know social media, like you said, goes, gets a little messy and whatever. Um, we did have a couple other spots, um, that the leaves, uh, carried down the ditch line and, uh, dropped some driveway culverts, got, uh, plugged up and the water came out and around and into the road. Just want to remind everybody out there that has a driveway culvert, you are responsible for that driveway culvert. We do try to clean ones as we go by if we, if we happen to be in and, uh, try to take the leaves just out of them so that the water will continue to flow, but, um, those are the homeowner's responsibility and, um, any help with those would be greatly appreciated. Hashtag clean your culvert. Other than that, you know, and I, I joke around a little bit, but, uh, no, it does, it does, it does seriously help. Um, you know, we've got a, we've got a small crew and, uh, can't be everywhere at once. Um, and I do think, you know, the, the town's drainage, drainage system does handle the rainfall pretty good. So, uh, I guess with that, I'm, I'm all set, I'm going to ask some questions.
We just need it to stop raining.
Yeah. At least it's not available.
Go ahead.
Dan, I want to notice, say that, I can tell the work you guys do, how much of a difference it makes traveling on some other towns I won't mention, fairly close by to here, do not clear out the gutter on the side of the roadway that you do, and the amount of breakdown of their, their pavement on a regular basis. So it's much appreciated.
Yep, and that, and that really is, it's just like gutters on your house. If, if you don't, if you don't clean the edges and get it to flow where it's supposed to go, then, then you end up with problems, but I, we thank you for that.
Dan, I just had a question.
Sure.
Regarding on what's going on in New Durham with their electronic signs, is ours tamper-proof?
Yes.
I, I.
Well, you do have to, you do have to log in.
Okay.
You, you do have to log in to, to use the sign. It's not really rocket science, science to run the sign, I, I program it, so it's, it's pretty simple, user-friendly, I should say. And, uh, but no, we, we really haven't and, um, there is a way, there is a way of locking the doors up on those, I don't know what they're having for problems as far as people.
They're changing what it says.
Well, that, that's a main problem, so, so basically the control part of that has a lock on it. So if we start having problems, you know, we would, we would lock the box up and.
Okay.
And, um, make sure that, but yeah, you do have a sign in, um, but it's, yeah.
Thank you.
All righty. All set?
Oh, thanks.
Hey, Dan? All right, please.
All right. So we had busy month as well, um, we had a hundred and eighty calls for service come through Strathell County. Of that, we had thirty-three incidents, uh, that were opened up, we had no arrests this month, no motor vehicle accidents in town this month. Uh, six citations or warnings were issued this month as well. Uh, we did do quite a bit of work around the PD, just trying to, uh, make it more operational-friendly, functionality-wise. Got some prices from CCS for some stuff, uh, we wound up just doing it ourselves, saved us quite a bit of money.
Thanks.
Uh, took a little bit of time, but we got it done. We're still working on a new cruiser proposal, um, again, that, that will come out of our revolving fund for the cruiser. Uh, at this point, it doesn't look like we're going to need to take any money out of the budget whatsoever, uh, the target area's budget, so. Randy is back part-time, so I've been working the details and shifts. So that's helping our cruiser fund and helping us with coverage here in town. He came back, uh, he started back Tuesday, this past Tuesday. Prosecution in-house, workflow's going good, uh, we've handled a couple cases now in the Rochester District Court, um, a couple referrals over to the county attorneys. So we're just kind of still working on tweaking that and just changing it so we get, uh, make sure we don't have any oversight or miss anything as far as, as far as that goes. The courts have been very good, we've been very good with the courts and the county attorneys to ensure that, uh, nothing gets missed or overlooked. Uh, continuing training, training's going to be one of those things you'll probably see on here every month. Uh, the requirements now at P S D C, it's a minimum of twenty-four hours of training. Uh, and that twenty-four hours of training is outside of your firearms and your other traditional trains, it's basically going to be twenty-four hours of extended training. It used to be eight, then they bumped it up, I forget how the numbers went, but over the last couple of years it went from eight to fourteen and the end goal was twenty-four, so. This year in twenty-twenty-five, we're going to be hit with a twenty-four hour mark. But a lot of that is, is, uh, you can complete online and we also have a subscription to Police Law, which does a lot of online training as well, which, which helps fulfill those requirements as far as the training goes, but you'll probably see that every month on the, on the reports. Uh, continuing the speed trailer, having just moved it around town, kind of monitoring areas and basically just using it as an educational piece to let, remind people what the speed limit is in certain areas. Seems to be working well, uh, got some good feedback from residents, I've also gotten some residents that give me feedback and say it doesn't work. For those listening, be aware, if you've seen this speed trailer anywhere, odds are you're going to see a cruiser parked there now. So the good thing there is that you've had implementers to understand what the speed limit is. If you happen to be one of those people that's making it flash, be slow down. We answered pretty much all the calls for service in town, I think this month we had, or the month of May, I should say, I think we had two calls that specifically came for it. Uh, both of which one was a, uh, uh, alarm activation at the school and, uh, which wound up being, I think it was a false alarm, I think it was papered wrong, the hall. And then I don't recall off the top of my head, but, uh, state police has been very good with me and communicate, uh, just last week they called on the Friday night and we worked out a game plan to deal with the situation that was here in town later on the night, the past Friday, so, or last Friday. Uh, so that line of communication is still very good, they're still working with us, they're great partners, we appreciate their help. And other than that, can we ask any questions?
Do you want a speed trail?
Yeah.
Does it record, um, kind of, uh, speeds, does it record them?
No.
Log them, okay.
So it will, it does have the ability, if we put an external drive to it, to, uh, basically keep the speeds in the time of the day, but it, it doesn't take pictures.
No, no, I hope I, I was, would, does it, does it need a certain amount of space to work length? Like, would it work on a little tiny road like Gary Road?
Yeah. I have it on the pole right now, so.
What would you require for you to put it on, like a little road like Gary Road?
Oh, nothing, I'm, to be honest with you, every week I try to put it somewhere different.
So you can just email them and say, hey.
Fast, Dr. Carl Dolan when he comes home.
Yeah.
Yes, it's just anybody out there listening, just send me an email, I mean, we're totally moving around, every week I try to put it somewhere different.
You couldn't put it on a little road like that, though, is that, is that?
As far as the shoulders and stuff, we'll know, sometime we'll talk to a property owner and see if we can tie it up on the inside of the corner.
Well, I live right on a corner and I, I mean, that's why I asked you to record it, because I just would love to know how fast people are going around that corner, because we've got a lot of kids in that area, you know.
Kate's going to be out there in her chair.
Does it have to be plugged into electricity or?
No. No, it's old. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
You've got? All right, Town clerk tax collector, um.
I haven't received any.
Okay.
From May.
So I got nothing? All right, treasurer's report. So, did you want to do that?
I can do that.
Okay.
One question.
I'm Kelly Campbell, I am the town treasurer. I'm very happy to say that March is finally balanced to penny. It was a little bit of a struggle, uh, last month I was able to get through two statements, this month it's only been March. There were a couple of transactions that needed research to match up, so I could know where the money was coming from. And during that research, I took time to learn our online invoicing program and now I can locate a whole lot of information, how transactions break down, I've learned the capabilities of the program, so hopefully it'll make going forward easier, um, because I'm excited, I only have two more months away before I am caught up.
I would like to comment that, um, she's done an excellent job, a lot of that research itself, both of our positions with everything, so she's done a great job.
I'd like to say the same thing, she's enjoying working.
Thanks.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Carl?
Hey, Carl Roy, going forth and filling in fact.
How you spell it?
So, um, I have the numbers for both April, May, and a mid-year report as well. So for May, there was a total of, uh, seven building permits, resulting in four thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty cents. Two of those permits are for new construction homes from, uh, this is again from May. In addition to that, for May, there was also eight other permits, so that includes pools, gas, electrical plumbing, demo, all the other different permits of gas, I don't think two hundred and fifty dollars collected. For May, there was seven new, uh, permits, one of which is a new construction home. Um, so that's in the last two months, there's always three new construction homes. Um, I know I have two, maybe three applications for new construction homes on my, on my desk right now for this month. That resulted in two thousand, two hundred and five dollars and twenty cents. In addition to that, there's also eight other permits, again, it's the electrical plumbing, gas, demo, all the other varieties, resulting in four hundred dollars of, um, fees collected. And so far for the year, we have had a total of permits resulting in, oh, I thought I broke it down, but, um, we get seventeen total building permits for the year. And keep in mind that people don't usually build until spring, they don't even think about building until spring, so January, February, March, usually pretty slow. The last couple of months is very certainly a fall. That was seventeen building permits, of those building permits, four new homes were included in that, so in the last six months, there would be four new construction homes that have gotten permits. And, um, there was an additional, so it was twenty-seven additional permits, which included all those other types of permits, electrical plumbing, gas, all that type of stuff. Total resulting in these, including all types of permits of eleven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents. And, um, I would expect this summer to start getting busy, so the next couple of months probably get pretty busy with that building, especially like what he said with the new, um, driveway permits. For Pinkham Road, there's, uh, going to be at least a few homes that I would expect to be on Pinkham Road for the.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are these contractors that are getting the, are they, uh, a homeowner, like Bill, like I'm building my home here, or is it a guy that's building a home in this area?
For the new construction?
Yeah, it's curious.
I've never had, um, this year, I have, have had people that own their own property and build their own homes, but, um, I think we've only had like two as long as I've been doing the job, so usually it's the contractors. Um, building a home is a little bit of money nowadays, so people don't usually take that out by themselves, it's a little bit of work. Um, from a CEO standpoint, um, notices have been sent out to residents that are in, not in compliance for keep sites, um, in the process of trying to get the people that are not supposed to be on these sites, um, removed from these sites. Um, there will be more notification going out in the near future to try to fix these ordinance issues so that they do not continue to happen and get everybody back up into their places. I think that's it, if you have any questions?
No, anybody?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, municipal building maintenance?
Do, um, so I think Scott and I were having a conversation, Scott initiated it by talking about the police shed and then it kind of morphed into the municipal building, the, around the trim around the building is, it's not to rock because it wasn't, um, covered and I know like the, um, shutters and stuff like that, so we had just had a conversation about potentially getting some bids on making some, um, updates to the building and that, so, unless you have something to add, Scott?
Nope, nope, uh, it's just the shed, the shed's been empty of the roof and, uh, paint and it's one of those things where I think if we wait any longer, we might lose the shed itself. And when talking to Roxanne about that, she had mentioned, you know, the trim work and whatever you want with the building and I said, well, I'll get quotes for everything, so in the coming weeks, hopefully I'll just have some quotes for you guys, um, for all this other stuff.
You might want to look at one of the windows in my office, it looks like it's rotten.
Yeah, so we, we'll do a walk, a walk-through, yeah.
You can just hire the fire requirement.
All right, internet and wifi at Old Town Hall?
Uh, yeah, when the rec was in here the other day trying to do some stuff, um, we're still having problems connecting in here.
Were you following up on that, Tim?
I was.
Okay, I thought you were, went from the election.
Yeah, I hadn't heard anything lately, so, um, we figured we'd bring it up.
Still working on it. All right, um.
I'm curious, so have, any, do you have any issues with that at the municipal building as well?
I haven't had any there or not.
I haven't had it there, but I've had it a lot here.
And I've been working with CCS about giving, because I have a lot of issues with the laptop, where I'm just being like minutes of waiting for something, we're going to have to work back and forth with them, so I want to give anybody else what's happened with those issues.
Yeah, we're on a desktop, yes. Do you have a shared IP versus?
I'd love to know what that means, but I just.
Well, it's like, it's a kid.
I believe so, he does.
Like with Teresa, she has a dedicated one IP, nobody can share.
Shared IP means it was caused rotating.
And it probably does, but.
So.
I, I know they were looking into it, they said something about making it so that I have a direct connection or something, but it's still slow. It's mostly on the avatar app, but it's very impeding on the production because it'll just be sitting there waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting. Where it should just be a click, it used to just be a click, it's not a click.
Could he, could he just, uh, could he just take the, uh, the internet and, or, you know, plug when he's there, plug it right? Could he just, could he just take the internet and, you know, plug when he's there, plug it right into his laptop?
Does he have a port near him?
Yeah, he would have it at his desk, because where is laptop? Maybe at the desktop.
Play with stuff.
I mean, if you have a port there, you can, yeah, you can plug it in.
I have a dock, and my laptop in my office, and it works great.
My laptop doesn't have an ethernet cord.
Yeah, but that's what you have in a little block.
We have the dock, and I think that they have that wired.
Right, and if nothing else, let's call, there are adapters, and I have a whole wall of them, I could give you one.
I think that they added a wire specifically for that last time, and it's still having issues.
Okay.
But I don't know if it's a laptop issue, an avatar issue.
Well, try to plug it in hardwired and see what happens.
Yeah, it's just, it's frustrating. Some days it works great, other days it's not.
So, Tim, you're in the office on Wednesdays, right? So Carl, if you could maybe stop by during that time?
Yeah, can I message at any time?
I was gonna say, just, right, what I was saying, he's in there on Wednesday, so...
Alright, we already talked about the ambulance revolving fund, estimate for new converter from PD to third floor?
Oh, yeah, yes. So this was to replace and move the fiber converters to the second floor, because the issue is, is when the internet goes down over here, and that means fire, Old Town Hall, and Highway. The only way to reset that is in the PD, and we all don't have access to the PD. So we're, the idea is to be able to move that up to the second floor at the municipal building, which if you wanted to think of it, would be the third floor, but it's really the second floor, to have that moved in. The estimation for, the estimate for that is $950, so...
And it's called the converter?
Converters. Did I say converters?
I think it's spelled wrong.
That's wrong, it's spelled wrong.
Oh, my fault. I thought it was a new technical term.
I'm like, I'm looking at the estimate, it says converters here.
Yeah.
So, and that would be super useful for...
Yeah, no, that would be very helpful for all of us.
So the estimate is $950?
Alright.
I will say this, after moving everything down there, it might actually be worth a phone call to Consolidated. Because what they have running right now is there's actually an ethernet cable that runs from our switch to those boxes, which then goes to fiber. The fiber then comes over here, and then there's conversion boxes in here from fiber back out to the ethernet.
What, we have the move?
Certified CCS.
Yeah, so...
Well, what I'm saying is, is if you call Consolidated, because they're the provider, the internet provider, and they might just plug it into their switch upstairs. Because what Consolidated's going doing on is basically running a cable from my closet downstairs up through the chase hallway to the third floor.
That's what certified is.
Plugging it in up there.
So this is certified, so we should reach out to Consolidated, which is the home.
I would just inquire with them, because I did that the other day.
They never remember.
And I was like, I don't see why they couldn't just plug it into the switch upstairs, and not have to just chase that cat five cable or cat six cable away.
So Kim, can you follow up with Consolidated? Or?
Yes, I...
Oh, oh, no, Tony! I'll point the finger.
I'm gonna need more hours to say.
Because you're the phone person, so, alright, sorry. Kim, Tony, would you find it five, 10 minutes? Well, you're probably gonna be put on hold for an hour, so...
If I could talk to a person, if they don't give me a ticket and wait, are we gonna have to call me back like last time?
Okay, alright. So we'll, we'll hold tables until...
We'll deal with that for now, and then we'll move forward after we hear back.
Okay, so I'll give you that back.
Sorry to throw you under the basket.
I know, I forgot, Tony's the phone person.
Alright, cell phone tower, T-Mobile?
So this was just brought to my attention, I think Danny was saying, or maybe it was Jim was telling me, that T-Mobile is putting a computer or...
Yeah.
Scott, you know.
They'll be on with this.
Yeah.
It's been two months.
So we'll, we should see a bump in our revenues from that when that is complete, just so everybody knows that T-Mobile will be up there.
Yeah, they're currently down there repairing wires and stuff. They are in the process of...
Wires are on conduits and, and a fair...
PTA use of the Old Town Hall?
We got an email from, I guess it's the pals, or it's a PTA from the school, and they wanted the use of the Old Town Hall on... Bonnie, do you remember the date?
It was the third Monday of July, I think it's the 21st, maybe?
Budget committee was a meeting, so they wanted to be able to use the, I think they're looking to use it for no expense, and I, so... Just throwing it out there, they came in and...
I'm probably on the PTA, I have no problem with that, I mean, if you want, refuse myself because of that, but I can let them in and...
Yeah, I mean, I just am throwing it out there, let me know, so...
Everybody okay with the...
Yeah, they just need to fill out the forms to use the building, so that we get it on the calendar, so nobody else tries using it at the same time.
About four left of them? Alright, RSA 91A rate and level requests.
So this is just, I guess would be a first read for, had the town's procedures for governmental record request to put out, you know, when someone requested 91A, the policies and procedures that we have to go with it. Because we have a blank form, I think, and we just should have procedures that go with it.
I do occasionally get emails from companies with that exact thing, and I question that, because I feel like in the past, I remember there being a rate and level form being filled up by, like, even for the selectmen avenue, do that. So is that something that I should require from these people?
They should be, they should fill out a 91A.
Yeah, they should do that.
Have they been like only asking it using that term?
Yeah.
But not having the one filled out?
No, they should have a form to fill out.
Perfect.
I'm gonna be honest, I haven't really had a chance to take a look at it yet.
I just sent it out, so it's just the first read. And the same with the...
The Pets in Building?
Pets in Public Building, Town Public Building, first read.
Yeah, I looked at a little bit of that, the only question I had on there was, it looked like, was called, so we were talking about the town buildings, and we didn't include the highway department or the fire station.
Right, and I think the high, is reason for the, and we can add those, I think for the fire station, those, they usually do the rabies clinic there, so that's...
Oh, yeah, but was called...
We can do the exception.
Yeah, we, yeah, there's an exception for that, right?
Alright, yeah, so we can, yeah, we can add the highway.
What are you doing with Pets in Public Building?
No, I don't know.
That's too sad.
So guide dogs and other service animals accompanying, it's first read, highway and fire.
Don't do that, just, it's still a small town, I think you see, it's such a joy when people bring their dogs, and you see, you know, you actually have big problems.
So, yeah, we had a lot of issues with that?
I've had several people, I've had a number of people address, comment to me. I can't speak to a number of people. I don't, I can't speak to Tracy or Bonnie or whatever, but I have had people comment about...
Well, okay, we...
Oh, my God, I love, I love going to just small towns, seeing somebody with a dog, I love it. Just fix friendly, makes it nice, it makes it fun. Unless there's been big issues, don't make a problem, there is none. Everybody, there's gonna be complaints about everything.
Is it something that was called, we should put for a warrant article coming out, or is that the public side?
It's governed by, it is governed by RSA 31-39, power to make laws, the following can be...
Well, yeah, I mean, I know we have the right to do it, but I'm just saying, should we put out to the public?
I don't think another town that is voted on by the... Say that again?
I don't think it's a warrant issue.
Right. It's just a first read.
Now, has anybody else have any idea, or any thoughts on dogs in the town hall, or anywhere else public property?
I'm far behind over there, and I just think it's good, because then they know it's my office somewhere, because he lives across the street. So, they know Zeke is silly, so I think he was a little beach look.
What would happen if someone actually, like, if someone got bit, God forbid?
Town would be liable.
So that's probably one thing to look at. I have dogs, I'm not...
I have a dog.
You brought him here, you brought him to the town and you were eating once.
I did.
But, yeah, this day and age, you know, I'm sure the regular person, you know, if there's a dog, anything, they probably wouldn't have a problem, but you don't know, some people, but...
I just, it changes so quickly, I just...
Well, and it is, and that's, 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 everything changes like that, I mean, the speed, everything, you know. The mains are different, you know, so, yeah, I just, that's, that's all I was asking, that's all.
My village doesn't be on the whole.
Doesn't work that way.
If you're in a town building and your dog bits, and they're gonna sue you as the owner, and then they're gonna sue the town.
Yeah, deeper pockets.
We were just talking with our daughter, who was a business, about that the other day, and she's explaining what happened. And because, you know, in the business, unfortunately, ask if someone actually has a certificate for, you know, proving the dog is actually a service dog. It makes, puts the business owner in a big, hard place. But as far as municipalities, what are the, what are the other towns around doing? I mean, not that it matters, I mean, are they, do they have policy stuff?
Yes, yes, because pretty much this is, this is a duplicate of the Town of Milton.
Oh.
And, you know, goes on so far, so the rationale of it is considering the health and safety issues, is conspire, conspire allegiance, allegiance, sorry, thank you. Reactions among employees, volunteers, residents, visitors, some employees' residence contracts are a genuine fear of dogs, or, and cats, et cetera, whatever, you know, I mean, this is, which needs to be respected. Concern should be of employee, volunteer, residents, visitors, be bitten or injured by an animal while in the town facility, spreading of fleas and ticks can carry disease. Animals can cause a disruption in the workplace, animals can cause damage to town facilities. All of these factors put the town at risk for potential liability. That's coming from another town.
Somebody's shy about you.
That's a very good question.
Well, okay.
There are some very feral children out there. I relate to some of them. Some of them live in my house.
So it's a first read, just throwing it out there. If we're good, I have two other things that I wanna...
Alright, so, yeah, we'll talk more about this in the upcoming meetings.
So just want to remind, we have, the planning board meets this Thursday night, we have a combined meeting with the ZVA, and Carl and Mike, we've asked as well to come to the meeting, so I just wanted to mention that.
I can stay till about 6:45, so 45 minutes.
Yeah, we start at six, yeah, so, we can...
A couple minutes.
Yeah, and, Tony, where are you going?
She's talking to somebody?
Well, no.
Is she involved in this one?
Well, yes, because I was gonna say, have, and I don't think you have, I was just looking, saying, I know you're working on the phone issue. Oh, that was one thing I was gonna say, is, and I was mistaken and probably gave misinformation or whatever, misunderstood the reason for having the phone in the municipal, in the Old Town Hall, was for 911. It was actually having that conversation with Scott, is actually for emergency management personnel, because this is the headquarters for that if something happens. So, but given that, if there was an emergency, I'm sure the chief, fire, fire chief would be here, so he would have access to his office and whatnot, so...
He's the emergency management director.
Right, so...
Yeah, myself and the other two chiefs have access to the office.
So, I'm, I'm thinking so that maybe a moot point is to actually have the phone, that was the purpose, was for...
Well, then we also want to have the phone in the building for people who rent it if they need something or emergencies.
I think the idea was to potentially, my initial thought was to be able to dial 911, and how do you control that, I'm not sure, but that was it. But then having a further conversation, the initial reason should have been for the emergency management, so, and that certainly, we can take, continue to talk about that as far as having a phone. And how would that, what does that look like?
I think that's definitely something we should, can talk about. Alright, anybody else?
That's all I have.
Yep. Tony's hard work in getting the town to get credit cards. We had nothing on paper of when Middleton was incorporated, so the state sent her these screenshots, I'll put them out on the table. They're very old, and we were wondering where does the board want to hang these? They're from February 28th of 1712.
So that's the incorporation of the town?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Oh, they're all the same thing, or they're...
It's three pages.
It's three pages, okay.
Yeah, and it's very legible, it's beautiful handling.
Yeah, the pictures are, were amazing. I contacted the state archives, and they emailed me the pictures, so I printed them out and put them in frames. Because I thought they were so amazing.
Is it, can you hang things in this building?
Yes.
It wasn't that hard, so I mean...
Yeah, we can. Yeah.
Is it appropriate to put them on? I mean, there's law space here, I don't think there's anything in the town hall, but I'm just talking.
That would be perfect.
Like I did.
I mean, that, like that wall right there.
I don't know, I think they're better off here, you know, if this is a historic building.
You know, I don't know.
Yep.
So either like maybe down there.
Yeah. Because when people are having parties in here, that would be less likely to get hit, I feel.
Wow, smart thinking, Bonnie.
Alright, so...
Thanks for putting that together, Tony.
Thank you, Tony. Alright, anybody else?
The people from 911 were here, a phone just plugged into a jack, only can call 911, it doesn't even need to have service.
Yeah.
He had mentioned that.
That's why we were trying to find just an 911.
Where the jack can be, like, one of the old...
I reached out to John Mellon, and he said there's not one in the main room, or whatever.
Oh, the office?
No, there is in the office, and there is a phone, going to be a phone in there for the fire, but, so we may be able to, right, so we may be able to...
Run a line for a loan.
Right, put a phone in.
Who was little, pick up a lead, well, isn't there, there's gotta be another, because they have the old town offices all over there.
I understand, that's what I said, Kate, but it probably got, she robbed, we did.
Wasn't the police truck?
It's right there.
But, it's probably not connected to anything anyways.
Oh, it's probably dead.
It's been so long.
I searched this hallway, and in the kitchen, and behind where the chairs is, there's nothing.
Yeah, it would have been probably covered over when they refurbished the town. So I think it would be best just to, if we want to have a fresh new one, that we knew worked. You know, Christine here, we are there to rig the wire.
Alright, anything else?
Mike, did you have anything?
Is he still there?
Wake up.
Mike?
Mike?
Are you still there?
Oh, he had a song for you. He had a song for you.
You got anything, Mike?
No, I had nothing.
Alright, is that the most to adjourn?
I'll make a comment.
Any public comment?
Oh. Any public comment?
I got a few things to say.
Okay.
Really, Kenny?
I'll write them down, bring them next to me.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
What do you got?
I don't have anything.
Oh, okay. Alright, eight ten, second?
Who wants to second the motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Oh, do you want to?
We're not doing an hour, just going to your comp.
Oh, wait a minute, make it a moment.
Oh, so we gotta go in non-public?
Tracy's making a motion, so they want to know how to pass the motion.
She just wanted to, um, just kind of go with you and see, you've got any message or whatnot.
Alright, so, Kim, yes?
She told me this weekend that she had sent you a message, and I seconded, so...
I'll second it.
But Christine Maynard said she could be there all day.
Well, this would be just a continuation from the first one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll put it there.
Um, new guy just moved in on Dudley, um, across from K-Lars.
Yeah.
And we were talking with him today, and he just found out a bunch of ditches in front of his house, and he got washed out pretty bad this year. He's not sure exactly how to do, he's, he's a landscaper, but he's not sure exactly like how to do things and stuff, and so, he said, let me pass that on to you. And so, he said, we could pass that on to you.
Yeah, he has cleaned the leads and stuff in front of him and that's pretty much, when you get a rain, it'll, it'll wash him out.